Hello, I'm Kalila Harris. And for the purposes of this interview, I'm representing Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated's Sci-Fi Omega Chapter. I serve as the chair for our committee overseeing social action and community connections. This is a third in a series of interviews with candidates for city council president based on data collected as part of the Blueprint for Baltimore Survey. OSI Baltimore and Community Partners Baltimore Votes, Black Girls Vote, Black Leaders Organizing for Change, CASA, and the No Boundaries Coalition conducted the canvas and survey in the fall, asking more than 5,000 Baltimore residents to identify their priorities for city leadership, making this the largest issue-oriented survey in Baltimore's history. You can see the survey results at OSIbaltimore.org/ blueprint. Again, that's OSIbaltimore.org/ blueprint. OSI co-sponsors Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated's Sci-Fi Omega Chapter, which serves East Baltimore, and the Junior League of Baltimore. Along with media sponsors WYPR and The Real News Network, planned to host a forum last week to pose these questions to city council president candidates. But because of the COVID-19 pandemic, the forum was canceled. Instead, we will conduct these interviews with each of the candidates individually, using questions prepared for the forum by the three moderators. Lisa Snowden-McRae of The Real News Network, and WYPR's Tom Hall, and I were scheduled to moderate. Unfortunately, Tom and Lisa are not available to participate in this interview, so I will ask their questions for them. Today, we're talking to Dan Sverakko. Welcome, Dan.
Welcome. Thank you for having me.
Absolutely. So we'll ask questions related to six areas covered in the Blueprint survey: education and youth support, public safety and policing, housing, economic and community development, and civic participation, as well as health. We'll ask you to please limit your responses to 90 seconds. We'll give a little flexibility, since this is a unique situation. But in and around 90 seconds will be great. And before we start on the questions, can you let us know how you're dealing with the COVID-19 pandemic and any reflections on the city's response?
Well, I'm dealing, like the rest of us, one day at a time. I work at a law firm downtown, and we have been working remotely for the past week, week and a half. So I'm quite lucky in that regard. You know, I'm worried about a lot of people. People in my immediate family, my mom and my sister, have both lost all of their income and are on unemployment in New York. A lot of people are in that situation. You know, we've been trying to keep track of neighbors here in Green Mount West, trying to keep track of families with kids who are in need, adults who are in need. We have a lot of artists here who have lost their income and are struggling as well. And I've been watching, you know, trying to root for our local government. Obviously, the number one thing I think we're learning here is the importance of governance, period. Having strong institutions and competent leaders who can get us through a crisis. There are some things I wish I was seeing more united front locally. You know, I would like to see the mayor and the school CEO and the state's attorney perhaps speaking at one voice at one time, obviously with proper distancing, but on a stage with the head of Public Works and the head of our other major agencies, Fire and Police, to give us a sense of how are we going to make it through this? Is our workforce safe? Are people staying healthy? We have a report today about the virus spreading in one of the bus depots that's affecting bus service. This is just the very beginning of a long process. So I'm concerned, but I have to just follow along with the rest of us and hope we make it through.
Great. Thank you, Dan. Alrighty, so in my nine-to-five capacity, I serve as the managing director of K-12 Education Policy at the Center for American Progress. And so our first topic is going to be on education and youth support. City officials often state they don't have a role in public education because they don't control Baltimore City Public Schools. Answering only yes or no, do you believe that the school board commissioners should be confirmed by city council?
No.
Okay. What other specific ways does city government play a role in making sure children have quality public schools?
Well, so I paused in the answer to that question because that's actually an interesting question. Because normally, the question of control is framed around, should commissioners be elected? And the city's role has been simply the question of funding. In my view, if we're going to serve our kids properly and if we are going to solve some fundamental problems that our school system has had for a long time, we need to realign accountability for the school system. Before 1997, which is a long time ago, the school system was directly accountable to the mayor. Kurt Schmoke, when he became mayor, wanted to be the education mayor. Unfortunately, the only way he could become the education mayor and get the state funding necessary to attempt to fix the schools was to give control of the schools away. So for a short period of time, there was a bifurcated oversight between the state and the mayor's office. And that kind of gave away. And for some time now, to be honest, there has been no direct oversight of our school system at all. And today, there is no elected official with any direct accountability for the school system. So in my view, that we need to roll back the 1997 arrangement. We need to restore city hall direct accountability for the school system. And then within that, that's when you can start having interesting arrangements so that you have school commissioners. I think in that instance, electing school commissioners, that might be a good idea. Certainly, at a minimum, the city council should be confirming school commissioners. But control over the school commissioners is a very small piece of a much larger puzzle. And particularly in light of Kerwin, the amount of money we're going to be spending on schools, we need more direct accountability and oversight. Because somebody has to be held accountable. Right now, we have a lot of mayors and a lot of people who say, "Well, schools don't always work, but it's not my fault." And that just can't continue.
What are a couple of specific policies that you would seek to bring forth directly related to education?
Well, I think, number one, I think we, if you look at the Kerwin Commission and this multi-year effort to figure out at a statewide level what Maryland schools should get for funding, what we need to do and what I would want to do as the city council president is essentially create the same robust, long-term process to identify the funding necessary to actually fund our schools properly. Right now, we don't have a clear picture because we don't have a functioning audit process of where all of the money goes. We have a very large police department with a tremendous amount of funding. We're being called on to fund a tremendous amount more schools. So the number one thing that we can do is create our version of a Kerwin Commission to bring together lots of people to dive into the city budget and identify all the sources of revenue that we need to start devoting toward the school system. I think that's the number one thing. I think, number two, as I said, we need to restore local control over the school system. And I think, number three, if we can do that, then we can unify school construction and all the construction of mostly rec centers, but other services that are also provided to kids in other institutions. We don't need to build rec centers in one corner of the neighborhood and a new school in another corner of the neighborhood. What we need is to unify these resources because our resources are finite.
Great. Thank you. The Blueprint for Baltimore overwhelmingly supports increased investments in our city's young people. Again, answering only yes or no, do you support the Baltimore Children and Youth Fund remaining outside of city government to preserve the vision of community members from across the city who worked to set it up?
Yes.
Okay. Do you want to offer any follow-up on that?
I do. Yes. I've actually asked around about the youth fund because there's been obviously a lot of controversy about the youth fund. In my recollection, when I was Assistant Deputy Mayor of Operations under Stephanie Rawlings-Blake, youth funding at the time was all funneled through the Family League, and it was always a point of controversy. And there was a lot of politicians who just didn't want to deal with it. And so there was politicians on the inside who liked the idea of offloading all of this funding decisions and this responsibility to a third party. And so part of me was like, "Well, I'm not comfortable with that because I think public officials who we elect to spend our money should be accountable for how it gets spent." But what I've learned about the youth fund and the reason it exists and it points to a more serious structural problem is that the way we make decisions about how to fund the kind of programming that youth need, identifying the right programming, we have an entire foundation system in the city. We have multiple institutions. But what I believe is now the case is that very few of them know how to do that. There are very few people who know how to understand what the right youth programs are. And so this youth fund, in a very short period of time, was stood up to fill a huge gap. And my concern is that that gap still exists. And the youth fund is only a very small beginning of filling a huge gap. And the government does have to play some role in filling that gap and convening people so that you have these external funders doing their job better than they've been doing it.
Thank you. Some argue that the money that the city spends on policing could actually be rerouted to education and other youth services. What's your take on that, having said already that you think there should be a commission, to some extent, identifying resources?
Yeah, well, I think that's exactly right. I mean, and I realize that, you know, before this public health crisis that has now taken over the entire planet, our number one issue in the city was crime and public safety. And so a lot of people are hesitant about the idea of saying, "Well, we spend too much on police." But we do. On a per capita basis, we have one of the largest police departments in the country. And I don't believe spending more is the answer to making people safer. So I do think that over the long term, we simply have to move money out of the police department and towards education. Because honestly, there's very few big pots of money that we have as a city. And one of the very largest is the police department. In effect, we have three mayors, and it's a mostly unsustainable system. We have a mayor that everyone's going to elect in city hall. And then we have a mayor of a school system that sits on top of a bureaucracy that's about the same size. And then we have a police commissioner. And there are these vast pools of money. And if we do not analyze from beginning to end how will that money get spent so that we actually spend it in the right way? And that's going to require asking a lot of hard questions, but we have no choice but to do that.
Thank you. We're going to shift now. The next step is dovetailing from that, public safety and policing. These questions were prepared by Tom Hall. Thirty-two percent of respondents to the survey support expanding safe streets. The city has other violence interrupting programs like ROKA. ROKA is now funded in large measure by philanthropy, as are several smaller organizations, like Hope, Helping Oppressed People Excel. Does the CCP have a role in coordinating the efforts of these different groups?
Well, what the council president and the council should have a role in is budget setting altogether. In my view, we elect a mayor to be the convening force of these various actors. And as we all know, we have a city with a massive public sector and nonprofit sector and foundation sector. And today, to be frank, I just think we're not all on the same page. And so we're going to need a mayor setting an agenda and convening stakeholders to kind of rationalize all of these resources that are already out there. But what the council president, in my view, the number one thing, one of the key things the next council president has to do is fix the budget process and fix the way we set the budget. And in my view, and I'm alone in proposing this, we need to get rid of the Board of Estimates altogether. This is this not transparent, secretive board where decisions get made and the city council is sidetracked. And by sidelining the city council, we're sidelining all the people that the council is supposed to be representing. So I still think that the mayor, because the mayor's the chief executive, should have some final authority. But I think there should be much more role for the city council. And you do that by cutting out this Board of Estimates process. If you'd have one convening effort where people start to decide, because the fundamental question is, what are the things that government should be spending? What programs should the government directly be funding? And what programs should the private sector, the foundation sector be funding? So ROKA is an interesting example of that. ROKA is a long-term investment that is very different from day-to-day policing. And I can see a balance there. But that balance has to be struck, and that has to happen within a city council process.
Thank you. Twenty-four percent of respondents to the Blueprint survey said that they want to improve the relationship between police and the community. What's the role of council president in this effort?
Well, there, I think, there too, to be honest, I think we have a structural problem that, as council president, I want to address, which is, we don't have direct control over our police department. From a policy perspective, my view is that I'm a big believer in safe streets. I'm a big believer in something called focus deterrence and group violence intervention. I think we can spend much less on policing than we do. And I think most of our policing, if we could end the drug war tomorrow and not see an increase in violence if we do these things correctly. However, we have to face facts. The council president doesn't have direct control, executive responsibility for the police department, and doesn't patrol the streets. That's the mayor's job overseeing the police department. But the problem we need to solve is the fact that we don't have direct control over our police department. And once you do that, once we have that control, we can start directly rewriting the boundaries of the police department. We can get much more innovative about how to reform our police department. We have basically stalled on the consent decree. And that's because we have this confused issues of control and a lack of accountability.
So the city council president is the chief legislative official in this city. What legislation can you suggest or imagine that would effectively address violence reduction?
Well, that's a very interesting question. Again, I go back to, one, the budget, two, control of our police department. And those are the two main things. I mean, to be honest, I think we need to look at a lot of our a lot of our local criminal statutes. We need to make sure that we are focused on violent crime. But I think the council's main role here is budgetary. We need to be leveraging, we need to be incentivizing our state's attorney to move away from prosecuting low-level drug offenses, which has already happened to some degree, and funding prosecutors that handle violent crime. We need to be figuring out how, within the juvenile system, to find the minimum intervention so that we're not jailing teenagers for long periods of time away from their family and away from school. But our intervention there is mostly budgetary because it's where we spend money. It's those decisions, those are really the sacred decisions that the council makes. And it's the main reason we elect a council and a council president is to allocate those resources. Because our budget is a statement of values. And that's really the number one thing that the council president can do in shepherding that process when it comes to crime.
Great. Thank you. We're going to move on to housing. These questions were prepared by Lisa Snowden-McRae. In 2016, Baltimore residents voted to create a $20 million Affordable Housing Trust Fund, funded partially by revenues from taxes on real estate transactions. Citywide Blueprint participants thought the money should go to reusing vacant buildings for affordable housing. What do you think about where the money should go?
Well, what I think is that the money needs to go to hard units, meaning actual, physical units. And I think they need to go to small-scale Section 8 housing. Because that's actually something we can invest in and deliver a result. The problem with the Affordable Housing Fund right now is that it hasn't built a unit of affordable housing, and it's been a long time. In my neighborhood, the most successful and the most stable affordable housing is Section 8 apartments for low-income families. Over the past 10 years, Green Mount West has changed drastically. And the families who live in those homes, their kids are getting the benefit of streets that are very safe. We're walkable to two good schools. And Section 8 housing allows multiracial and income-diverse neighborhoods to flourish. And that's where we can get the most bang for the buck. Because $20 million, let's face it, it sounds like a lot of money, but it's really not. It's a very small piece of the puzzle. And we have to keep in mind that all public housing that we have seen built over the past 80 years has been funded by massive federal investment. The local governments have a very small role here. And I think we need to be advocating nationally for that kind of investment.
Thanks, Dan. Respondents to the survey also expressed enthusiasm for the idea of supporting nonprofits that provide affordable homeownership. Do you agree that this is important? And do you have a plan for supporting these groups?
Yeah, I think actually, one of the pitfalls of Vacants to Value, which actually was my neighborhood, Green Mount West, along with North Patterson Park, were really the two neighborhoods that benefited from that program the most. The main problem was is that there were so many people who I can see and I know them, they were left out of the process because when values were low and homes were within reach of working people, we didn't have credit counseling in place. We didn't have programs to move people in neighborhoods in transition into homeownership. And that's exactly where smaller, community-based activities, nonprofits, can really have a huge impact by making a direct outreach to people and figuring out their credit, figuring out to make sure their tax situation, to make sure that they have income in the formal economy that they can show to show a bank and will help with the down payment. That's where you can have tremendous impact. Because there's so many people in my neighborhood who had the chance, even five years ago, with that kind of intervention, to buy a home. Because to be honest, my mortgage is lower than most rents. And most rents in the lowest-income neighborhoods in the city, rent only goes so low. And if we can move people to homeownership in that way, that would help a lot of people. And that's where these kinds of interventions can have an impact.
Thank you. Respondents to the survey, actually, let's talk a little more about COVID. As we go through the current COVID-19 crisis, we're seeing how important it is to take care of people experiencing homelessness. They're most vulnerable to getting the virus and spreading it. How do you plan to address the needs of those people as city council president?
Well, within the current crisis, look, we have a ton of hotels, and they're going to be empty. And the only people going to be staying in them are members of the National Guard. And what we should be doing immediately is commandeering hotel space for temporary housing for the homeless. Because if we do not slow the spread of the disease, which is guaranteed to spread in homeless shelters, it's going to overburden our hospital system. And we simply can't afford that. So most immediately, that's what I would do. On a long-term basis, what I think is really important is, I'm in support of a housing-first model where the number one thing you provide people is housing. And the problem is, we don't have the housing. And we need to get very creative in building, it's a bit of a fad, but I do believe that tiny houses have value. I know that people look around and see a lot of vacant buildings and just say, "Well, how can it be that we have so many unused vacant buildings and so many homeless people?" And the problem is, all of our vacant buildings are totally uninhabitable. And it would cost $150,000 to renovate one of them. But we should be building tiny houses now. We have tons of small manufacturers, open works right here in my neighborhood. There are tons of people who could build. We have the land for it. We should be immediately housing people and rehousing people so that they can stabilize their lives and then move on, move out of that housing. But we need housing, number one.
So dovetailing from that, we're going to move into questions about economic and community development. Would you support a universal basic income for at least the 35% of residents with the lowest incomes or living at 150% of the regional poverty level?
Well, my concern with universal basic income is that there's a degree to which this whole idea is a way to reduce our overall obligations to our neighbors and our citizens. And we see this even this week and last week with the COVID response. There's a lot of Republicans who came out and said, "Well, let's just give everybody $1,000 a month." But they're not saying, "Let's give everybody $1,000 a month on top of everything they get." Like, long-term, there's a lot of people who want universal basic income simply to wash their hands of, just push everyone out to a free market and say, "Well, we'll give you $1,000 a month, and good luck. You can fix your own healthcare. You can buy your own food, everything else." So I'm a little worried about that. I mean, there's no question, we need to set a floor for families and so that everyone can survive. But we have, for many years now, have stopped talking about public assistance. I mean, that's by far the most important way we can support everyone. And when I was a legal aid attorney in New York, I mean, all of my clients, I had hundreds of clients, and they were all on public assistance. And they got money for living and for food and for their shelter costs, their rent. That number needs to just go up. And that, to me, is far more important than a one-time check because that's something comprehensive. And so between that, and then, to be honest, I'd be much more interested in universal healthcare than I would be in universal basic income because healthcare costs are just so outrageous. They would outstrip whatever we would give people in universal basic income. For your average family, they're going to spend it all on healthcare.
So let me push you on that a little bit. We have families and legislation and advocacy around a minimum wage, and not a lot of discussion that that minimum wage of $15 is not a livable wage.
Right, right.
So if some of the issues that you addressed, that it would be on top of any other aid or that it would not be taxed in the same way that salaries are taxed, could you see a scenario where UBI is important for those families who are working poor as opposed to families who may already be on public assistance?
Yes, yes. Well, and I totally agree. The question is, if you could simply guarantee a floor for people or you could say, "We're going to give people a universal basic income, some number, but it's not going to impact the other systems we have," that's certainly something to consider. As I said, my concern is that that's kind of a Trojan horse to dismantle large-scale the public safety net. I mean, there's a reason that people out of, there's these people, tech entrepreneurs out of Silicon Valley, like this idea. Like, I don't know that they're motivated by taking care of our residents in Baltimore City. But to the extent it's a supplement, that's a possibility. But what I also think, and I think we're seeing this every day now in the midst of this COVID crisis, you can see that it's low-wage workers that make the world go round. Now, anybody who's been paying attention would know that already. But when you're a bus driver, the guy picking up the trash, so many essential services that require low-wage workers, the people ringing up the groceries at the supermarket. It turns out, these are the people who are the most important in the whole economy. So I would like to think that that's going to change the conversation on minimum wage and give people a sense of how important those workers are to the overall economy. Because the only reason anybody can make a living is because they do their jobs, and today, they do them for relatively little.
So keeping along the lines of access to jobs and how people having jobs can So keeping along the lines of access to jobs and how people having jobs can help the economy keep moving, what are your thoughts on people who, again, have, the 35% of people who have the lowest incomes and/or the people who are living at 150% of the regional poverty level, having access to free public transportation? And what transportation changes would you make or advocate for to improve access to job opportunities?
Well, I think that's, that's an awesome question. And I think, I think we should absolutely be looking at MTA. And by the way, MTA is another bureaucracy that is essential to our future as a city. It's essential to our destiny, and we have no say over it. So my view there, we need a regional transit authority so that we have a direct say in the structure and functioning of the transit system. And I think if you look at the function of it, see, people, it's hard to keep this in mind, but it costs a ton of money to collect the fare that we pay when we get on the bus. I ride the bus fairly regularly downtown to my job. The process of the transaction and all the cost of collecting my fare, that costs a lot of money. So that fare does not pay for the functioning of the whole system. And it's my suspicion that, yes, we could run an entire system for free and make up the difference. It would cost something, but it would, it would make the system function so much better, it would be faster, it would be, it would be available to everybody, and I think it would be a tremendous boon to the system. So I think that's entirely, that's entirely possible. I do not support, and everyone loves to expand the circulator. I think people need to get on the bus, okay? The bus runs great. You know, if you're, if you're on the purple line of the circulator, you really have no excuse to not be riding a public bus, an MTA bus. So I don't think that's sustainable. I think we need one public service that everyone rides. I think overall, the transit problem that we have, it's an, it's an access problem. And this goes to the overall, the big question about, why is this, is there such tremendous disparities in our city? Why are there neighborhoods that are so isolated from opportunity? Why are there such a gap between rich and poor in this city, between black and white? And that, these are transit decisions that were made 80, 90 years ago. Okay? We have so much, oh, sorry.
Thank you. We're going to move over now to some health questions. And these were also submitted by Lisa Snowden-McRae. And thank you for being brief going forward.
I know, I wasn't using my timer, but now I'm going to keep using it.
Keep using it. All right, so respondents to the Blueprint survey said that if more money were allocated to mental health, trauma, and substance abuse services, the government should make treatment for these things more affordable. You just talked about free, universal health care. As city council president, how would you advocate for more affordable care for mental health, trauma, and substance abuse?
Well, I think, first of all, I think that we should, we should acknowledge that the school site is really the center of the lives of any family with children. So there should be, for our children, there should be mental health services available at our schools. My view also is that, that all of our schools should run as community schools, and these should be hubs for the neighborhoods that are around them. So I think those same services could be made available for parents at those schools. I think in terms of, I think we need to de-stigmatize mental health treatment overall. Like, there has to be a way to make that service more available to more people. I do think that that's where you need state and federal intervention to make, you know, health care more, more affordable for people. On substance abuse, so for example, I strongly support the Safe Injection Site legislation that I believe was introduced in the council recently, if not passed. And I think what we need to do in terms of overall drug treatment is, we need to change the way drug treatment is provided. You know, right now, drug treatment is provided in these massive warehouses where maintenance drugs are given out. It's not innovative, there are best practices we could be following. Drug treatment should be more readily available at general practitioners. It should not be something that's stigmatized because everyone goes to one big, you know, treatment warehouse. These facilities are important, and I don't mean to denigrate them, but, but we need, we need to really revamp the way we provide drug treatment to people and treat it as a medical problem, because that's what it is. Okay? It's not a matter of willpower, it's not a matter of, I'm weak and I'm, and I'm a drug addict. No, it's a medical problem, it has to be treated by a doctor.
Thank you. 30% of the respondents to the survey said that it's important to them to have access to affordable and healthy food. Do you have a plan that shows you're addressing the issue of food deserts? And if so, what is that plan?
Well, I, you know, I've been thinking about that a lot over the past couple of weeks, because I'm frankly terrified about how are people going to eat, even assuming that the bus system remains mostly functional. You know, we have 80,000 kids in our school system, 80% of them, when we measured this, we're qualifying for free and reduced meals. I'm glad to see people volunteering, and we're all pitching in to kind of give out food, but the scale of this problem is massive. I think we have a basic market failure here that needs to be addressed by the government. So I think we need to stop waiting for grocery stores to open in places where they are not going to open. There's just, I'm a little tired of hearing the promises about, well, we're going to talk about, to this person, or that store, or we're just going to wait, maybe Trader Joe's will finally open a store somewhere. It's not going to happen. Okay, what we need to do is open stores directly. If we need to, first, we need to, and we need to survey those in neighborhoods, because people with cars in neighborhoods that qualify as food deserts, people who have cars are not sitting there starving. They're getting in a car and they're driving to a supermarket. It's all the people who can't easily do that that we need to be taken care of. And I think we need, we need a direct government intervention to, to fix that problem. And nothing short of that's going to work. I do think, for example, an easy thing is to simply, you know, allow people free car shares, Uber, Lyft, to and from a grocery store from, from whole neighborhoods. You know, that's a short-term, easy thing that I think we could do. But long-term, we need to, we need to substitute, we need to create what the market is not going to in certain neighborhoods until the, until the economics are there.
Thank you. We're going to move on to civic participation for our last topic. These questions were also prepared by Tom Hall. 80% of white voters said that they've been involved in informing the budget process. Less than 60% of African-Americans, 40% of Latinos. How would you increase engagement in the political process among people of color who have long been marginalized in Baltimore's power centers?
Well, I think, number one, I think we need to solve the internet access divide, the so-called digital divide. We have 60,000 households that do not have internet access. You cannot, it's very difficult to engage today in anything, any public process if you don't have internet access. And that's going to explain a large part of this. So we need, we need to fix that problem. I think we need to make some use of the city's conduit system, that that's basically where our, the internet system that we all benefit from, those who have it, that's where it lives. We need to make use of that, but I think we need, I think we need to jumpstart to kind of mobile technology. I don't think we can wait for, I mean, to be honest, I think that internet should be provided like a public utility. And I think, much in the same way we're talking about universal basic income, we need universal basic internet for people. Because it's simply a question of survival in the 21st century. But I also think, this goes back to my point about the Board of Estimates and getting rid of it. The budget process is long and confusing and has many different steps, because it starts and ends with this Board of Estimates that nobody understands. The number one thing that we can do is get rid of that from the process, and that opens up the budget process. Now, my view is still that the process should work as it does. The mayor writes a first draft, introduces to the council, and then we have a discussion of priorities. Because the assumption is that the mayor gets elected, having some understanding of what, what the city's priorities are. And then we talk about it, and the council's the place to do that. Right now, we don't really have that process, and that's a problem. So in terms of engagement and transparency, the number one thing we can do is do that in the budget process, and doing it by getting rid of the Board of Estimates and making the council a place that can have that conversation intelligently and transparently with the whole city.
Thanks, Dan. So as a last question, elections next Tuesday, by April 1st, you are mayor, oh, not mayor, because you're running for city council president.
Thank, no, thank gosh, yeah.
You're city council president. How do you, what's your responsibility for, and what does it look like for you to be engaging citizens personally?
Well, I think, I think first, there's no, no real substitute to going door-to-door. I think talking to people on a, on a direct basis. I think we, I think there needs to be, I'm a data person, so I think it's important that we have conversations, and we have face-to-face conversations, and we have, but at some point, that's all, a lot of that's anecdotal. I think we need, we need to make use of our, all the partners and institutions that gather data. I mean, for example, this entire, the OSI survey that was done, right, that was a huge data gathering effort. Those kind of things need to continue as we dial in. Because after this election, okay, we're all going to have to answer, first, we're going to have to deal with the COVID crisis, then we're going to have to really start asking ourselves, okay, where are we going to be in 2030? Where are we going as a city? Who are we now? Who do we want to be? Because, let's face it, no one is happy, okay? Again, the crisis right now has distracted us from it, but like, by and large, most people think the city's headed in the wrong direction. What I also think, and the main thing that city, the main reason I'm running is to make City Hall a place that can actually convene people, that can actually bring people together. My example about the, our mini Kerwin Commission to find the money for schools, I mean, I think we need a couple different versions of that. You know, when it comes to development, when it comes to rebuilding our police department and fundamentally rethinking that. We need to create structures that allow people to get engaged in a sustained way and have a direct conversation between City Hall and the rest of the city. I don't really see that happening now, and that's the kind of thing I would like to build, and that's, that's how I would, that's how I would seek to engage people.
All right, well, I want to thank, again, Open Society Institute for being the lead organizer and for conducting the Blueprint for Baltimore survey. I want to thank my fellow moderators, Lisa Snowden-McRae and Tom Hall. Dan, I want to give you just one more minute, if there are any closing comments or remarks you want to share.
Well, I just would say thank you. You guys have really done great work under very trying circumstances to, to pull all this together. And I would just say very simply that, you know, I'm, I'm running for this job, not because I think, I didn't grow up saying I really want to be council president. I'm not running for this job because we even need a new council president. I'm doing it because we need a new system. And I was a lawyer in City Hall, I was an assistant deputy mayor, I've seen it not work up close. I think we are in broad agreement across the city that things don't work. And my answer to this problem is simple, like, this job of council president is something that is a very powerful job, that is very nice for politicians to have. My view is, I want to get rid of it altogether. I don't, I'm not interested in having power, I'm not interested in getting in line to be the next mayor. What I'm interested in doing is taking apart this very failed, broken system and rebuilding it. And that's, that's my goal here. And so my website, danssparacco.com, come check it out, I can read the whole plan. And I just want to thank you so much.
Thanks, Dan. Thank you, everyone, for watching, and we hope you are able to see all of the candidates who are interviewing for your vote for Baltimore City Council President. Thank you.